Magic.
On your cheat sheet?
Magic paper?
Yep. If I use this, I'm dead.
Kim, did we get that grid for that electric thing?
We did. Well, yes, yeah, yeah, we did. Everything's good to go. We have to purchase the machine and then I'll go through it in my report. But yeah, we got to purchase the machine and then they were reversed back.
Smoke it.
So, yeah, they were really good by us smoking that week.
Yeah, it was quite.
Which is huge for a provincial ground.
It's amazing.
Yes.
Awesome. You need to write some checks up there.
Yes. Then I have to try to sit still.
Hey, really the only thing in my, well, the nice fun thing in my report. Now everybody knows.
Sorry.
If that's our main pitch. Hopefully I'll ask something more interesting than the grant in my report.
Well, I guess it's seven o'clock, so Kim says that we can start even though our picture hasn't come up. But for those.
He says it's getting ready to go live, so.
We should be ready to go here in a minute, but so we're recording this. And so any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, some additions?
There is a correction.
Okay.
Motion twenty twenty-two dot one nine seven.
Oh, in the minutes?
Oh, right, sorry, sorry.
Okay, no, we're just on the agenda.
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
I'm not on here at all.
No, I appreciate that. So on the, any other, any additions to the agenda? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, I'll pick Barbara.
She's causing less trouble than you are.
Yeah. And those troublemakers, they don't look. So Barbara moves the agenda as presented. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll propose a favor. Let's carry unanimously. Okay, moving on to the council meetings. Okay, Judy, you said that there was a.
Yeah, on motion twenty twenty-two point one nine seven.
Twenty twenty-two.
It wasn't carried unanimously, there was one.
Do I change it?
Okay. That one.
Oh.
Okay, I'll change it back.
As amended.
Yes, okay, thank you for that, Judy. So it was just carried.
I'll prove it as amended.
Okay, so Judy moves it as amended. Okay, any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call questions in favor. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to correspondence. Alberta Municipality Convention, or AAM Convention registration. So.
So the reason this is in the is, of course, we have an impolicy that all councillors attend the AUMA Convention based on the timeline for September twenty-first through twenty-third. Karen is looking at booking rooms so we can give the early bird pricing, saves a little bit of costs on that. And of course, so we just need a verbal commitment from those who are, know that they're going to attend, but I don't, you know.
I actually booked seven rooms.
Okay.
This is for the convention itself now.
No, yeah, this is for the convention.
No, if we want to do pre-convention session, I'd like to do the council's role land use and development.
Yeah, and we can just, and Karen will book all that for you, just let her know.
Just let her know, okay.
And Karen, I'll try to make the, as much as I can at the conference, because I don't want to cost me putting out hotels, because I'm sure I will be able to make it also.
That's fine, I just booked seven rooms.
Sure.
And whoever used them, that's it.
That's right in the middle of ours, so I gotta talk to my boss. I, even if I was to go, I have someone to stay there, so.
Okay, so, and just if we'll let Karen know.
Can't go over the tent there.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's all I was thinking towards, before the tents, we get the early birds, we're not paying more than we have to.
I'll talk to Tracy tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good.
That's, and that's, just put in there for your information of what information we have so far. They just put everything else. If Karen interests in free book and pre-sessions and that, just please let Karen know so we can get everything.
Yeah, I don't think they affect the early bird, do they?
No.
The pre-session? Okay. Okay, sounds good. Anything else on that one? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the federal election district change. Kim sent this out, you see that we're, there's a potential change for the MP. So we will fall into.
We'll be part of the foothills district.
Foothills one instead of being part of Barnes.
So when it falls right down Highway twenty-three, so the ones on outside of Highway twenty-three will be remained in the Bull River. On this side will be foothills. So we'll be changing divisions again. And you guys have all the information they reviewed every ten years. We have a commission set up for all of those electoral districts. And they are putting on public input sessions. And the closest one to us is in Lethbridge on September twenty-sixth. So we added that information. Our MP did stop in and talked to me a little bit about it. Told me I would put the information for you guys so that if you do have concerns, questions, any of that, you can participate in the public conversation and the things. They seem to change it every ten years.
Yeah, it seems funny though, they, you know, they go all the way up to Red Deer. You know, you'd think that they had cut that one off and leave the one in the county, you know, so it was co-turned, it was bound near the county and cut that one off of Red Deer. I mean, gosh, for him to go from Brooks all the way up to, you know, there, to Red Deer, this seems like a.
I see Quebec's getting another one. Not a surprise.
Anyway, I mean, if you want to attend a discussion meeting, like Kim said, there is the closest one to us is in Lethbridge. Martin also did send this out in his notice in the mail too. So that, you know, if there's any residents or any great areas that are interested in going, you can find out about it.
By putting it on the agenda, we're hoping to make it public from our end. If you don't get the MP newsletter, those sort of things.
Yeah, okay, that's great. Yeah, because if you don't get the junk mail, I don't think that one.
Might not be to the residents, yeah.
Okay, anything else on Barnes? Okay, if not, somebody wish to file a response? Cole, I guess. Oh, Cole didn't do it there.
Oh, Bill's talking his then.
Geez, I've given away, given away to Cole, and it was Will. Will moves this one. And his name is even right towards me too.
I didn't know when we dropped the name last time.
Okay, any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. It's carried unanimously.
You should have never left for that month of training.
Okay, moving on to the cash statements. Any?
So you've all had a chance to review. You can see that we're carrying about one point five in our general accounts at one point eight. And the reason why the reserves popped up is because of that reserve funding that we moved out of our budget from the money from the county through the sewer hookup to industrial stuff, so.
Okay, any questions on cash payment? Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to accept the cash payment, period ending June thirty.
Okay, thank you. So Laughs moves this one. Any discussion on Laughs' motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. It's carried unanimously. Okay, year to date?
Ken, you've all had a chance to catch, I'm guessing, I'm hoping, everybody caught the one on the sewer. That's where we brought the money in and brought it out. So that's the reason why we have three hundred thousand dollars more in income and three hundred thousand change, or in more expenses. It's six hundred thousand total, and it'll show up through the, through the end of the year when that comes. You can see our income is seven hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. But this is part of the year. It's sewer, we didn't do that in utility accounts.
Okay, any questions on, anything on that one? Okay, if not, I'm making motion, Barbara. Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to bylaws. So we've got three bylaws for tonight. First one is the industrial borrowing bylaw.
So the bylaw has been advertised for two weeks. We received no written notice, no phone calls to any account. So I completed the declaration required on the fifteenth. And which is sealed with the bylaw. So based on all of that information coming in, notice being given to the public through first reading, you can now proceed with second and third reading, and that being the thirty-day application for the Queen's Bench. And that basically, if you may have missed the petition, that can apply to the Queen's, the Court of Queen's Bench to be heard on the bylaw. But again, we haven't heard anything yet. So.
Move second reading.
Okay, Judy moves second. In the discussion on Judy's motion. Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. Post, maybe it's carried, there's one post. Okay, moving on to the third reading.
Oh my god.
Barbara moves it. Any discussion on Barbara's motion?
Just a question. Is it the, excuse me, introduction of the third reading, is that what we're doing on three, correct? You only have to do that when you do all three.
Okay. Yeah, because we gave it first, it could be advertised, then we can do second and third with the introduction.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so Barbara moves it. Any other discussion or question? Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. Post, so it's carried, one post. Okay, moving on to bylaw number fifteen oh eight dash twenty-two, land use bylaw amendment.
Notice the spelling error on the third paragraph.
On summary?
Yep, second line. It should be redesignation instead of resignation. Correct.
It sure should. Okay, we'll get that corrected in the report. Okay. So, here we've had a chance to read the report. This has gone through the MPC. This is the process that you guys talked about at the town hall meeting, and it's been over and over. This is requested to do three residential lots from our one to our four to accommodate either apartment building or multi-family, multi-human dwellings. And it was taken to the MPC on the twelfth, and they made recommendation to a council. You will see that there's two land use bylaw amendments. These follow the same procedure where you do first reading, we publicly advertise for two weeks. We then have the public hearing. The reason why we separated these out into two is because they're not land use bylaw amendments. But one is clerical little stuff. And the other is land use bylaw amendment for rezoning. And we don't want one getting come up on the other. So clerical also includes the discussion on C cans, minimum square footage on residence. And this one is just a rezoning. So we don't want the applicants rezoning changed beyond, well, questions on C cans and vice versa. C cans being come up on rezoning. So we did those, these separately, split, read them separately. Still hold a common public hearing. And because of the timing and us cancelling the August, the second August meeting, so this won't be back to council until the first meeting in September. So we'll have lots of time for the advertising, lots of time for feedback, that sort of thing. So it's not going to be, it's not going to be as tight a process as we like what you presented, Judy, but. So it's going to get extended out a little bit. So this one's very straightforward. The application came in, reviewed by the MPC. MPC made motion to bring it to council. Orsk put together the bylaw for us. Those are the lots. They touched on why they should be re-designated inside of our municipal development plan. So, yeah.
With those three lots, does he, does he have to do a separate straighten of lot lines yet?
Yes, and that'll be a different application because that's a road closure. So what has to happen is for the town to realign those lots straight with the road because they're on two different subdivisions that happen. We will, we will initiate that, and we have to do it from our side because we're, they don't look at it as expanding the lots. They look at it as closing a portion of the road. And that has to go for ministerial purpose, so it's quite a process. And there was no sense starting that process before you made the rezoning change.
Okay, so this will be first reading for this bylaw fifteen oh eight dash twenty-two. Any, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna make the proposal that we can consider, I mean, that we give bylaw fifteen oh eight dash twenty-two the first reading and proceed with the public notification of the proposed land use bylaw amendment.
Okay, thank you. So Bill moves out. Any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. It's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to fifteen oh nine twenty-two. So Kim kind of highlighted this one here is a more clerical than it is, but it does change the intent of the.
Right, so in the review at the MPC, several questions have come up from questions on the development side for people looking at doing infill, and mostly on the square footage side. We have a lot on the north side of town that's twenty-five feet wide with our current setbacks. You can't even put a house in there with the bins in. So there's quite a bit of discussion on the MPC side about that. And they went back and forth looking at minimum square footage for where Calgary, a lot of the bigger centers are living, needing it completely. Again, conversations on, on smaller homes, those sort of things, more affordable homes. With that, there was also the discussion on, you can't go smaller than a certain amount because we still have to be building code, all of that within our. So even if you wanted to build a two-hundred-square-foot house, you couldn't because you'd need a thirty-six-inch door, and you'd still be good for a plug yet. And so the discussion went full circle around that, basically down to, we couldn't, we looked at the majority of the houses in town, even some of the smallest ones. And one of the smallest was four hundred eighty square feet. And the average for the smallest is in that five hundred range. So council, or MPC at the time, decided to make the recommendation to go no lower than five hundred because that falls in with some of the current homes that we have in our T and D. And then that allows for that to then look at a waiver, which would make it easier to build on some of these smaller lots that we have around. The next one that was brought up as part of that discussion was the shipping containers. They're being used more frequently for construction, those sort of things. And this, this fell on the other side. We do not have anything in our, any of our residential for, for shipping containers except for our four, four thousand for construction. So what this, the conversation here was, we've had requests for people moving so they don't take possession for ten days. They have all their possessions in a C can, can they drop it on the driveway? Where it wasn't allowed in our land use bylaw, but in most situations, we tried to accommodate it by allowing that if it wasn't interfered with sidewalks, those sort of things, with a temporary. But we couldn't, we couldn't sign off on anything as a development officer, anybody from the office because it wasn't in our land use bylaw. So this discussion went with that about doing a temporary for fourteen days with development officer discretion on that, which we could then have something that our peace officer can also use for enforcement. And then anything over fourteen days, the conversation was around construction. We've noticed a significant increase in building materials going missing during construction. And we currently have all this other construction right now that had almost a hundred thousand dollars worth of material just sitting on the ground. And so the conversation was had around, you know, if they could put a C can on site for the term of construction. That's, the MPC had the discussion about how long does the average house take to build? And so they did the ninety days with an extension for a, for ninety days. Because after the ninety days, most of the materials should be in the structure. But if an extension was needed, and that way that could be done through a development permit. So pretty straightforward. The clerical errors were cleanup on cardboard. There is, it was a "O" instead of "R" in the description, which only really matters if somebody tries to fight it and it's not worked properly. So, and then the next one is, we used to reference a schedule inside the land use bylaw for our fees. And now you guys review that every year in the recent fees by law. So we've asked for an amendment to go, to change it to the, and again, we don't want, there should be good discussion on all of these updates, but the MPC has brought the recommendation to council for. In looking at this with Orsk, Ryan has also suggested that we may want to look at adding a definition for the temporary C can into the definitions as well. So, so we can tighten it up even more. It's not just a crappy old rusty can that people are dropping off and meets this certain criteria. But he said that that can be done between first and second reading is developing that and based on feedback if we get any from the public.
Okay.
I'll move first reading.
Okay, Judy moves first reading. And again, this one here will come up at the same time as the other public hearing.
So if this is passed, if the bylaw is amended, will they still need, or will they need to apply for a permit to have a C can on site?
For the fourteen days, they'll be able to do that with a development officer permission. Anything over fourteen days will require a development permit.
Yes.
Okay, anything else for questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. It's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to current business, town float. So we've had another request, well, Kim sent it out, the one to Lethbridge whoop up. And we haven't received one, but we did, well, we had a verbal one when we were at Milford Colhurst invited us, which is the Saturday after the twenty-third. But we haven't received a formal invite. But anyway, so we've added it to our list. We did have a, I had a suggestion that if we took the float down to Pitch of Butte on the Saturday, and then we found a place to store it down Lethbridge for the twenty-third, and then were able to store it again until the Saturday of Colhurst, then we wouldn't have to huck it back and forth three times. But, it's, go ahead.
So I reached out to Orsk, and they, they have a fenced yard in the industrial subdivision in Lethbridge and said that as we are a founding member of Orsk, we can store our merry yards.
So it was just a thought anyway, you know, because the Saturday to the Tuesday, and I mean, four days there and four days again to the Colhurst one, and we worked the Colhurst one, but if that's agreeable and.
So if you have verbal, we may not have to reach out to Colhurst, we can just make arrangements with them?
Yeah, like I said, they. They mentioned it to one, was it you, Mark, two of them, or just you and Judy?
I had just gone to my car, and it been, but purely myself, okay.
But I mean, I know last year when we were in Pitch of Buttes, they invited us to the one and to Colhurst, but we'd already had something else that we, most of us committed to. So I'd be willing to take it down to Pitch of Butte and Lethbridge and go over to Colhurst if that's, if everybody had any, wanted to go to any of those parades. The Lethbridge one is, I looked at the route and it's still kind of different because they start off at the mall, but they end up in the northeast corner of the city, and then you don't come back. So.
According to Su Dao, it's quite an adventure when you're riding up front of the float at forty mile an hour down Third Avenue.
Yeah, we, yeah, we took a kind of a convoluted trip home.
With everybody hanging off.
But I think the best way would be is to arrange to have our tow, a couple vehicles that we could travel back and forth with so that we wouldn't have that, have that situation happen again where we're trying to drive the float across the city, through city lights and traffic and traffic. I mean, we got lots of, lots of, okay, so.
I, I can't make it Tuesday, but I, I'm a Vietnam, Carmen Gay, and Fisher.
I can't make Carmen Gay, so if you're interested in going to let you take it down?
Yes, I may have had a scheduling conflict arise in the wrist, but I'm working on that. So I'll have definite, definite probability tomorrow, the next day.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll have no problem taking it again today, any of the other things, that's for sure, so.
If council's agreeable, you can just amend that motion to approve that all the float participated in the Lethbridge and Colhurst parades as presented and correct administration, make the necessary arrangements.
Might you help get Blair to pick us up too?
Yes, somebody.
You know, yeah.
So Monday and then today?
Monday and then.
Okay, ninety, I think.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Laughs moves out.
Yep.
As amended. Any discussion on Laughs' motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. It's carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. We're moving on to our meeting for minutes. So there's three of them there, or four, I would really guess, but anything on that Bapa? This one here, they only meet generally once a year, so she brought it in very quickly to be signed, and.
It's a short one?
It wasn't very long. Kelly really moved me through in a hurry, and they've got a new girl. Linda, cliche, was the administration on it. Now this is Kirsten, our Kristen.
Lucas.
Lucas from Loud area. Okay, any questions or none? Okay, and then we'll on to the, so same board meeting on June twenty-fourth. So far, we've been still doing it on my Zoom. Okay, and then the executive meeting of the fifteenth. Okay, no questions, we move on to the golf course. And again, Judy has highlighted most of these ones for us. Not something, but any, any questions for Judy, I think it is? Okay, if no questions on any of those, I'll entertain motion, Richard. Any discussion on Richard person? Okay, none, I'll call the question in favor. It's carried, I see. Okay, moving on to verbal ones. Councilor Magnusson.
I had a couple meetings. We hit the MPC, which Kim had touched on, where we talked about, good discussion on minimum size for residences. He said we almost went to a zero, like some of the largest in Calgary. But five hundred square feet seems about as, I guess someone technically could apply for something smaller than five hundred, but that would be something that'd have to come too. Uh, you see, can't we see? So good discussion on that, and with the, with the C cans. Because we've got one place that the C cans have been there for an extended period of time. Also, was at the, like everyone else at the town hall meeting. And it was nice to see the amount of people come out for, the last few times I've been to one where you could hear the echo in the room. And it was also. And it was also uh airport's committee meeting. Unfortunately, I gotta tell you it was work just before that, so I was needing to call the alternate. See, I just got the meeting minutes for that as well, I haven't had a chance to go through. Uh, that's that's my report.
Okay, any questions for Lyle? Thank you, councillor.
Um, same thing, the uh public uh information for the budget and um went to the parade in uh where we know bird looking at all these things and uh my grandson, he's out of it. It looked like a dork, he said, well, finally, well, you gotta come now because we're way up there. So he comes, the end of it, he says, this is great. He said, I'm having so much fun, can we do some more of these? He says, I said, well, see, so he had a great time, actually all had a good time, it was a lot of fun. When at the end we're coming back and one guy yells out, your float was the best in the parade, he says. So I guess it was a good, it was a lot of fun. My dad, make a fool of yourself, nobody knows you. So it was good, I enjoyed it. That's about it.
Okay, any questions for Richard? Thank you, councillor Smith.
Um, I've had a history at the town hall meeting last Monday, um, haven't had much more since then. Uh, no community futures meeting this month, next one is August uh twenty fifth. I got the Vulcan County Regional Emergency Advisory Committee meeting coming up on the tenth. That's the first one as you have been, so I'm excited for that. And uh, oh, and I did have someone come and ask me about a bunch of weeds on the east side of Almond Crescent behind their yards. I had those today, so she said, I'll show it to councillor.
Well, we can we can just talk about Gabrielle, which is that. Um, and that is all.
Okay, any questions for Lyle? Thank you, councillor Anderson.
On July twelfth, I was also at the MPC meeting, um, it was the longest meeting we had. It was a lot of great discussions and recommendations, so we really went through all these matters quite quite detailed and um and brought the recommendations to council. On July sixteenth, was also at Nobleford Parade and make sure these LP for again attending, they were awesome people. It was a real fun, all of them are real fun parades, but afterwards we took in the fire fire halls barbecue and it was really good and the people were amazing there, so. That's off to Nobleford. Um, July eighteenth, also attended the town hall meeting at the lodge. I was really impressed with the amount of people that came out and great discussions that were had. I um had some people come up and say afterwards, they didn't know the importance of coming out to these and how much information was actually available to them at these meetings and that they would definitely be returning in next year. So it was all positive. Had one person uh asked if they came across too abrupt, I said absolutely not. I said, I thought it was just really good discussions and hopefully that we came across less too and so. And on July nineteenth, as noted, the golf meeting, tomorrow I will have a Marcus Foundation. We're gonna, we didn't have a meeting for victim services, but with all the changes coming down for victim services, um, I think we're gonna call one here really quick because if we lose everything, we're uh there was all our money in that, so we've gotta make some pretty big decisions here. And our program manager's going on that leave and so how to move forward and help to maintain some stability here in our county with victim services.
They wanted me on Thursday, we're gonna tell you.
Well, we're gonna have a meeting. Well, I talked to Lori and she said, I said, I think we need to meet in a jester, yes.
She said, have a meeting.
Okay, all right, fine, I'll do it.
Okay, anything else, Judy?
No.
Any questions for Judy? Okay, thank you. Councillor Murray.
Um, I too attended the parade in Nobleford and my first live fun and attended my first town hall meeting. Um, thank you for all the people that came out, it was great to hear from everybody in the town that wanted their voice heard and other than that, um, I have had no committee meetings.
Okay, any questions for? No, councillor Dunn.
I didn't have any committee meetings scheduled for the past two weeks. Also at the town hall meeting that we had, I was pretty impressed with the turnout. I thought there was some pretty good dialogue there between, I guess, rape payers and us. And had pretty good conversations with a few of them afterwards too that I enjoyed. Um, I was at the show and shine in the demo derby a couple of weekends ago in town and I was blown away by how many people attended. I think it's our biggest event now, it uh, I guess the estimate was twenty twenty-five hundred people and some people didn't attend it, couldn't believe that and I said, I thought there was more there. So it was definitely around that number, so they did a really good job and uh, yeah, I was absolutely blown away by it, so. And that is it.
Any questions for Cole? If not, thank you. Okay, um, I went to a county MPC public meeting, like their their uh public hearing and just to see how, eh, cause they had some controversy all night and doing it generally. And so I talked to to the REEVE and he said, no, it was okay, no problem, show up. So I did and then we had a bit of a visit after on it, but I just went just to see how how they um did their meetings. And um, and again, Ryan was there representing um the uh Orsk at the at the county meeting, so that was good. So he was part of the administrative side, but information of people of administration also. Um, had an RUI meeting for Sewa and then we had the Sewa executive meeting um the next day. And so things are proceeding on both of those. Again, I was in Nobleford Parade and uh again, it was like Richard said and Judy and Barb were there. Um, and it was enjoying and gentlemen.
George Lee?
George, George Lee and your grandson, it was great, it was lots of fun, so. Um, it's it's nice to see the people and I think they were impressed like Richard said, to see a different float come to the community. Um, I too was at the town hall meeting and um and thank you for to Judy and to Lyle for doing those two parts of the program and also for the input from, you know, the rest of councillors on a little bit that, you know, um, you're able to participate in. I think Cole's comment to the to the group is is true, it was kind of neat to, you know, um, I'm not sure whether by all the discussions that's gone up in the Western Greens, Western um Creek area um was one of the reasons why we had such a good turnout, but it was nice to see because like Lyle said in the past few years prior to that, uh, turnout was really quite low. But then again, too, you know, the comments that have been made, you know, by Barb and also Cole, and if you have one person show up, you know, in January, it's worth it, but I know the previous councillors, um, we tried different methods to see. We had a um free cup of coffee, a grateful cup type thing on a certain day to see if people would come out. And um, one year we tried to do, or you know, to do some Saturdays and invite people in and it was always the same two or three or four people, so, but it was nice to see a good turnout for the town hall meeting. Hopefully I wasn't too too worried, but um anyway, um, that that's the one format that we've tried in the past and you know, when we go to do our next one, we're gonna discuss whether we wanna change the format to a different style. You know, and see if there's, you know, pros and cons to do one format or the other, but the the format for the information is identical to exactly what we do for our budget stuff. But I think also adding something to the meeting, you know, so we have something more than just the financial um is always interesting too because, you know, it gives, you know, like I've talked to Lyle a little bit, maybe we need to bring in an ass our assessor and let him explain, you know, how assessments work because there's so many people out there that don't know and whether we'd get a good crowd for that or not. You know, I'm not sure, you know, to try and, so if you can think of something, well, it's fresh in your mind, you know, let Kim know and we can add it to the list. So when it comes to the, you know, spring session, when we decide to plan one of these, we can say, you know, we'd like to add something to the.
Find something else controversial.
Go ahead.
Sometimes you gotta throw that out.
If it's in your mind, you can tell them we're building something, building something there in the corner there.
That's right. Okay, and then I had a Sewa board meeting, um, and that's the ministry for the last one, so. Any questions for you on any? Okay, um, thank you very much, uh, need a motion to for councillor, okay, Judy? Any reason, any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the questions those in favor. It's Carrie D. Anderson. Okay, moving on to the activity report.
So as you can see, how we are able to accomplish everything from the last meeting. Again, the outstanding items that we're still working on, uh, I met with uh North and Company this afternoon to discuss the X Society lease. We have finalized the schedules for that and uh, I again, we was able to uh put some more time into it. We was able to be a person today to do that, so. That's the update on unless councillor has questioned any of the other outstanding items.
Okay, if nothing, we'll move on to mid January report.
So uh, we have been working, uh, I guess, hey, you've already heard the MCCAC. Uh, actually, they returned the call, uh, after we got the motion done, uh, you guys knew that we had the grant application ready. We sent it to them, I got a phone call with them and he said, I'll let you know right away. And I made a a comment about provincial and federal grants. I said, uh, you said that like we'd hear from you immediately and he says, I hope by the end of the week and I kinda shrugged it off. By the end of the week, he had given us and I contacted Tom and they provided us with the funding agreement. So by the end of the week, so, and really it's because they already have the funds and it's a rebate program. So really their big push is to get us to get the machine so that they can rebate us, so. So we uh made the order, uh, again, just like the quote we saw, it has a six month lead time, so uh, Stu's working on that. Again, we got all the specs done and everything, so uh Big Hill's been really good to work with. Stu went through the final stuff with the grant with them and it sounded like they were gonna, he said, I think they've done this before several municipalities, so uh they kinda walked him through how this process was gonna work for the uh for getting a machine, getting the invoicing to make sure that we get the rebate uh in a timely fashion, so. So we're moving forward with that, again, uh, we've been working with Orsk for the land use by law amendments. After the MPC, we've got all the wording put together, um, and again, Ryan's working for both the county and the town currently, so he's been back and forth with that as well. We needed the listing for twelve oh eight, Western Greens Drive, it's been listed for a few years now and we're just following the assessed value for that. So we just uh readjusted it to do this new uh assessed value and uh creating the uh leasing, the listing for another year. Sent out flag policy based on the feedback from the any uh town hall meeting, so they all had a chance to look at it. Also sent that policy out to the gentleman that asked questions at the meeting and he was happy with what we had in place and thanked us for providing the information. Still concerned over when they get repaired, but again, that's a time budget and uh. So uh, SEMA Plus, you've all seen that the work has started in the industrial subdivision. Uh, they've got strictly complete, uh, they won't be starting the underground this week. And uh, we are meeting with the business owners out there to talk about the drainage through the utility drainways and just making sure that everybody's coordinated so we can get the work done all at the same time. We've been working at putting development agreements together for the the land that's purchased, but obviously the three properties that you just most recently got, uh, he's got his uh development agreement and three being with the legal council, so this will be here back with him and uh, we can bring that to council for formal approval and same for uh the other two properties behind the uh behind the tower. That one just got sent off this morning and went immediately to the lawyer uh with a uh little bit of a concerning note on there that uh didn't plan on developing right away, so that would kind of raise a light with this, but so we're gonna clarify that. The development agreement, once he signs into it, gives him eighteen months to make that remain nice. So we're trying to protect from that side. Uh, coordinated candy with the parade, we've got enough for one more parade, so we have to figure out which ones we need to take candy to. I'm pretty sure Lethbridge and the candy parade.
Well, it is, but it's not, I mean, it's um, I think it's one that you can skip, that's for sure. But ten, we did get the.
Okay, so all four, we need those red bags back.
George, I told my grandson not to throw too much candy, take one, you. I said, take some, I said, I just.
So so again, those red bags, uh, we need those back so that I can have, so I can set them up for that for the next parade that has candy and Tom should be good enough to come and get those. And then we will be out out the old candy from the pre-COVID quarter.
Are you talking about those hard tappy things?
Yes.
Yeah, they're good.
They're good.
They melt in your mouth, bro, they they just take a while.
Do you know many kids that are okay with just sucking?
It's a reward when they get.
The dentist probably really enjoy.
Some trade with someone's got some some.
Maybe we can get some sponsorship.
All sponsor new candy.
Uh, I've been working with the the county administrator on the recreation joint use for the pool and arena. It's pretty good, we hopefully will be at the next meeting, it's going to uh we've kind of agreed that we can take these to council, so uh it's going to county council on the third and then ours on the eighth of August, so we can bring those back and that will allow us to focus our time on the uh on the funding side for the program and how we're gonna do that, so. Really inside that, unless there's anything else that stood out, I had my regular meetings, I obviously had the MPC, the town hall meeting. Thank you again, that was great to see that turnout, I did let John C. Michael that he would have hoped everybody at lunch on the previous bets on the amount of people that would come and uh we're doing a town tell us landline review, they're trying to upgrade all of the tell us system, so they are reviewing all town hall facilities and yes, Judy, we were able to talk to them about FCSS and FCSS was interested in uh in getting into this system as well. The library is doing something through Chinook Arch where they get a better rate than we can get from tell us, so there most likely the library will be outside that scope, uh, but it's gonna include the pool, the uh arena, the tourist center, town town office, FCSS, uh, food bank and uh, I believe that's it for facilities.
It has to be a town facility, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so, and we're doing a a full review of all of them and then uh then they're gonna put in the uh bulk for the equipment and he, this uh branch that we're working with has yet to see what we have, significantly reduced billing plus paid for in the first month's credit paid for all the equipment that goes in, so it's changing to a internet based system, which we already have here in the office. So uh, that was Christine Holmes uh for development options onsite based on feedback from town hall. Uh, his open house that he had, um, we looked basically onsite for uh development options of what he can do with different areas and uh, again, he's still, he's gonna come back with uh with ideas, but right now it's it's just kinda stalled out. I'm assuming because of the proposal it took to the to the uh, what else? Each one of the, no, no, the.
It didn't help, sorry.
You lost it, it was right there?
It was there.
Um, I guess with this new um plan, I guess, for the rezoning, it was just, you know, as that he's rarely gone away from, yeah, looking looking for uh somebody else to, oh, uh, yeah, based based on the rezoning.
And I was gonna say the MPC, then it was.
Yes, so uh, and yeah, that's some of the some of the things is uh looking for somebody else to do the development onsite. Anything that's resolved, but uh, yeah, he's just looking at looking at options, I met him onsite, we looked at uh at some of the different things and compatible land uses, those sort of things. Uh, really more than anything, we concentrated on uh the area around that uh that. Uh, really more than anything, we concentrated on, uh, the area around that, uh, that hole and what infrastructure. We spent a lot of time looking at the old maps and what infrastructure can go through, uh, through the area of Cedar Drive that we talked about. So we could get that so it can actually be developed rather than sitting. Cause right now it can't because the sewer can't go anywhere. So I think he may be looking at, uh, at an infrastructure side rather than a housing side. We know just to make the land more viable. But that's, again, that's all just conversations we had. Stand, stand out, there's what mosquitoes. Uh, and then Three Peaks Consulting, uh, met with them on Friday and, uh, they are focusing on some development on affordable housing and, uh, looking at maybe possibly partnering with FCSS and the food bank for, uh, uh, for some auctions there. And what they do is they do more of, uh, uh, project management right through to, um, securing funding for, uh, affordable housing projects. So they've, uh, they reached out and basically, we talked about two or three different projects within the community that they, uh, might fit their, their scope of work. So, and again, uh, today I'm at the company for the X Society lease and that's my formal meetings of.
On that affordable housing, that's another one where you're gonna potentially see where somebody's gonna have to go from R one to an R four, you know, um, to make it affordable, they're gonna have to do some potentially row housing, um, you know, potential smaller, you know, so.
Condo, row housing.
Seventeen square meters, you know.
Yeah, apartment buildings.
What was it, probably the area? The nice thing about row housing, if you go to the row housing, you can still sell them, you know, like subdivide them. And whereas a duplex is great, but that's something that's put inside of R one. So, you know, I think we're gonna see more questions about, uh, so we need to R fours and R maybe R twos to, to try and get into that.
And, uh, this is, it wasn't a formal meeting, but I did have, uh, somebody in my office this week talking about specifically about if there is, uh, reluctance to rezoning, uh, for certain things within the community that, uh, I was basically being, and this is by somebody that was in, uh, has had an interest in this in the past, uh, was looking at reopening the, uh, preview, uh, area structure plan because it includes multi-family, R two, R four and, uh, single family dwellings where if, if restrictions on development are, are coming up by developers, then that's something we can look at promoting.
Only common standard, if for those that don't know, it's, that's Healy Land. And just south of the Ellen subdivision. Only problem with that is that, um, town will probably have to take on, kind of develop. We're probably be like between five and ten million of investment because of the storm water issue. Um, environment's not gonna allow us to do it, you know, that allows to do somewhat in phasing, but the storm water has to be done all upfront. And that's the most expensive component of it. And that's how we're gonna be in two million dollar touch to do the storm water for, for this stuff. So, I mean, like, again, um, and it would be, have to be, you know, most likely because I mean, have a developer come in, well, there's, is, I know NAMM has had that problem. That's why NAMM does their, has done their own last couple, their last three subdivisions is because they could never find a developer that was willing to invest that much money in the storm water.
That area where they were gonna put the solar.
That's it, yeah.
That's it, that's it.
That's it, yeah.
And the, the lease is gonna come up too if they don't, uh, move forward with that development up there.
So. And that belongs to the town.
So there's approximately seventy acres there. But again, you know, the, the, the guest unit was between, you know, five and, you know, fifteen million. Um, and, and again, it's, it's something like the industrial, you know, how far do you go and how far do you not go? But I do know that, you know, the last four or five times that we dealt with environment is they said they would not let you put a shovel in the ground. Unless we have a storm management. And that, you have to do it for the whole seventy acres plus anybody else's potentially runs into it. So there are some lands that, you know, do join to it that potentially if they're upstream, we have to catch their water onto ours.
So the, in Whispering Creek, the, the big lake that was, that's what, that's what that was gonna be, wasn't it?
Yeah, storm water management.
Yeah, and they, they excavated it deeper than it should have been. So now we're bringing it up to, uh, a week and a half. Uh, but the reason why I brought that up is it wasn't a formal meeting, but this is a member of our community that actively talks to all of you and has watched the, uh, proceedings over the last, uh, several months and is very, was very passionate when he was in my office about, well, if things are stubborn, we need to, so he, he will probably be near here on, on, on this as well. So, and has a ton of background because he's, he's been around for a long time. He's been paying attention to it, yes.
And, you know, if, if there are areas that are not as friendly to creating those areas, you know, you know, and then maybe that's what we need to do is invest the taxpayers' money and do some infrastructure of our own. And unfortunately, like I said, it would be a major, major investment, so.
So, and the only reason, like I said, this is an active person that I know is gonna catch it. So, so you have the background.
That's, can I buy any water and tickets like the, or?
If you want to buy one in town, same.
Yeah, you should, you could personally buy one. I have a big white book that tells me I can't buy it.
So did the, um, county have to have storm water management?
Yes, yes, yeah, they're handling everything down. Ours flows the same direction, but yeah, we, we have to contain it. And those, you, when we did our planning, you all looked at the area structure plan, how was that? That was that big pond in the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, we tried to get around it unfortunately. And, and to be honest with you, there, there's an example where if, if council of the day back in the forty, in the forty years ago would have done the industrial one, we wouldn't have had to do a storm water retention problem. They didn't care about it then. But it's only been in the last forty years that they have brought that in. So, um, now the rules are, I can't put water onto your property, but you can put water onto mine. So, so it's, it, um, it, it does, does create some issues, that's for sure, so.
That's kind of it.
Sorry, if you've been on, anything else for Kim or questions on Kim's?
MCCAC, Uni-Simple Climate Change Action Center. And it is subsidiary of, uh, Albert Hughes Palms.
Cause I, I was just wondering, you called me when you said, you know, they have money.
Yeah, how much?
Thank you. And, uh, one thing that I think the town needs, I, I mean, that's not gonna, it's not gonna tie in with my idea, but I guess I was gonna ask you as well. Are there any grants for the government for, uh, transportation for their small towns? Like for, say, uh, a taxi service or shuttle service for, say, seniors in a small town? Cause that's something that our town is missing out on by a lot of people who go because they, once they lose their license, we can't go anywhere in town unless they go to the state.
There is, uh, and the basic municipal transportation grant, uh, is tied to that. And the majority of it for, uh, public transportation is mostly tied up by the city's various stuff, but we need to meet that threshold we actually require.
Yeah, I think it's Turn Valley, Oak Twix, and then you were involved with, a little bit with the, um, one that comes from Milk River or from?
Yeah, I wasn't involved in that.
Well, I mean, weren't, weren't they going to buy, uh, electric?
Yes, and I have to go back in with Peter. Yeah, check with him.
That was true, South Row. But again, I, I don't remember whether they were getting a grant from something like Kim's.
Yeah, then it's, it's been a few months, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I have to.
Well, I, I knew that you would.
But yeah, it was part of the, it was.
Part of your group?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, any questions for Kim? Okay, if not, we'll entertain a motion for administration reports. Will will be in.
That's bigger than you.
Will's holding out for a special one.
Will, click loud.
Yep.
Any discussion on Will's motion? And then a call question? Today, last, Will, Will's gonna adjourn, close meeting. Okay, all in favor of Will's motion? Thank you, everybody. At the next August date meeting, I will be away.